Good evening. I guess we'll pick up a few people. I've got six o'clock, 6:01. Maybe we can get out of here before the sun goes down. I'm not sure about that. And just as a matter of curi-- you can't hear me? Just as a matter of curiosity, how many reps are actually here tonight? If you'd just raise your hand so we get an idea. Okay, not quite half, but close. And how many are new reps that have never been to a baby town meeting before? Okay, well, just for explanation, the baby town meeting is nothing formal, it's nothing in a bylaw, it's nothing in a law. It's just something that the Board of Selectmen enacted many years ago as a way to help inform the reps who vote for the articles and answer any questions ahead of time, ahead of annual town meeting. Now granted, not all the reps can come tonight, and so some of the questions will be repeated at the next annual town meeting, but for the most part, everybody here will have a chance to ask their questions and get them explained beforehand. So we're not here to debate really them, but to ask questions. And we're not here to vote on them or anything like that unless there's something that comes up during the meeting. There are some handouts over here if anyone didn't get them and would like to get them. And at the end of the meeting, we'd just have a brief speaking to the, from the Lee Greener Gateway Committee. So if everybody would just sit for five minutes, we'll do that. So what we're gonna do is Sean's gonna start. Oh, I'm sorry. Bob Jones could not be here tonight. He's got COVID. Jim Willis from the Health Department is not here. He's got COVID. So we have information from Jim that if anyone has those questions. So we're gonna start. We're just gonna read the articles slowly as we go. We're not gonna read the whole article. We're just gonna read Article One. And I would suggest you start on the third page, which is, has draft in the right-hand corner. Chris has put some explanations for each of the articles on the first two pages, which you can refer to. Also, for purposes of reading, we're gonna read that. Everybody ready to go? It's all you, Sean.
All right, so yeah, as Patty said, the first two pages or three pages are explanations for the articles. So I'm on annual town meeting warrant articles, Article One, Town Reports. To receive the reports of the selectmen, town accountant, and other officers, boards, commissions, committee, and committees of the town. Does anybody have any questions about that? All right. Article Two, Salary of Elected Officials, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries of all elected officials as required by law for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022. Take any other action relative there to. Give it a minute, anybody? Okay. Article Three, Transfer of Proceeds From the Sale of Cemetery Lots of, to Perpetual Care Account. And the Finance Committee recommends approval. This is to see if the town will vote to authorize the transfer of the sum of $4,100 or any other amount from the sale of cemetery lots receipts to the Fairmont Perpetual Care Trust account or to take any other measure, any other action relative there to. Cemetery, nope. Okay. Article Four, Omnibus Fiscal Year, 2023 General Fund Operating Budgets. And again, the Finance Committee recommends approval. So this is kind of a longer article, and this is to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds any sum or sums of money for the maintenance of the several departments of the town and for any other necessary changes or pass any vote or votes relative there to. So I think basically you can go down it. I'll go down it, and if anybody wants me to stop at any point, speak up. So this is, first is the category's general government. We have the moderator, which is $150. Selectmen.
Right-hand.
What's that? Yeah, it's this one, right, yeah. So I guess I can do both. So the selectman's operating budget went from $59,475 to $60,440. The town administrator went from $108,364 to $102,085. Finance committee stayed level at 500. The reserve fund stayed level at 70,000. Compensation reserve stayed level at 75,000. Town accountant went from $117,447 to $115,209, so we actually have a drop there. Assessors went from $109,95, uh, sorry, $109,955 to $110,955. Treasurer-collector last year was $196,250, and this year is $199,407. Town council last year, $36,660. This year, $37,333. Informational tech, we had a significant jump here, $64,442. This year, $84,318. I will hold on that. Do we wanna do that now, or should I keep going?
Why don't we do it now?
Do them as we go. Let's do them as we go. So what's the question?
Why the jump?
Ah, yes, teacher council, I think District Five. Big jump. Just need to know.
Sure.
Chris?
I think this is in part what we spent on some hybrid.
Yeah, there's a few IT upgrades. A large chunk of that is all of our payroll time and attendance right now is done on a very inefficient and old system that's completely paper. And this is new software that will put, this is actually for the school and the town hall. All of the teachers, as well as all of the town employees, town hall, DPW, et cetera, would all be on a new time and attendance and payroll system that's electronic, which is what most municipalities are using at this point. So does everything from our payrolls, timesheets, time clocks, to tracking vacation time, things of that nature. There's also some upgrades to our broadband. Part of that is also, you're gonna see in the police budget as well, because they have the communications part. Those are the two main things. If anyone has any other specific questions.
Okay.
Next is the land use assistant. Last year, $48,000. This year, $48,960. Town clerk, last year, $61,593. This year, $62,667. Elections, and what's that?
Registration.
Registration is $13,200, and this year it's $15,100. Conservation commission went up from $3,615 to $4,200. Planning board, last year was $7,581, and this year is $8,081. Zoning board, $2,575. Level HR. So this is kind of a new, this is Lindsay, right? So that, last year, she was in our town administrator, I think, right? She was kind of in that category, and now we're breaking her out, so that is $44,423.
She's, she is still--
Yeah, sorry. So basically, the HR is Lindsay, and last year, I believe she was in the town administrator line item, and this year, we're breaking her out separate.
Yeah, mainly because last year, we were sharing HR and town administrators. Now, we're only sharing HR, so that's, we had to separate that out. So before, it was taking both salaries into one line, because we were sharing both with Lennox. Lennox, Chris Ketchen was a Lennox employee, and Lindsay was a Lee employee. So that, that's our fifty, we're still sharing that, so that's our 50%.
Is that a part-time job or a full-time job?
So that is, it's a full-time job for both towns. So she has time in the--
That's the Lee share.
That's the Lee share, which is not just salary, but supplies, expenses, that sort of thing as well.
But coupled with Lennox, it would be something like, what, eighty?
Yeah, like eighty or eighty, close to eighty-nine with the two towns, right?
Before we start, before we keep going, our esteemed town council has suggested if anyone wants to move up, we have one, two, three, four, five seats right here in the front row.
Six, seven.
And a couple there in the back, just in case anybody can't hear anything. Okay? Nobody wants to.
Okay, so that was HR. Now we're to Town Reports. That's level at $3,600. Office equipment and maintenance, that's level at $13,260. Staff development, level at $4,000. And that's the total for the general government, which last year, we had an operating budget of $995,666. And this year, it's $1,062,265 and change. That's the total for the general government. Public safety. So we have police, $1,274,809 last year, and that went up to $1,319,617 this year. Fire department, is that, so this, that's the old, so I don't know why we have that. Is that just a placeholder?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of that number.
So the, so our fire EMS line item last year was $953,468. This year, we're, we went up to $1,025,785. The bill, hold. Yeah, go ahead.
That's almost $72,000. Let's, let's, where's the writing?
Does, do you want to speak to that, chief?
Good evening. Ryan Brown, Chief of the Fire Department. In 2021, the employees in the Fire Department did vote to join the Professional Firefighters Massachusetts Union. Their first contract is part of the drive. But their contract was written to maintain most of what they already had. Five years ago, we started with full-time firefighters. Five years have gone by, and they started getting step raises and accruing more vacation time. So that was a big jump on the salary side of things. On top of that, in their contract now, they have negotiated 50 hours per employee, which is nine employees, of professional improvement paid training. That turned out to be a very large ticket item. And the other driving point behind it was the, they have-- I'm trying to think how to work out. Instead of we just give them uniforms when they need uniforms, we set a, through the negotiation, set a uniform number. So before, I used to hope I had enough money to pay for uniforms when they get ripped, torn, and worn out. Now, each of 40 is entitled $400 in uniforms a year. We gotta add that to the budget. Add on top of that, did we do a 3% energy increase just in case?
Energy and fuel, yeah.
Yeah, so energy and fuel, we did increase from a level funding over the past three years to make sure we'll be all set. That's pretty much the explanation. I hope that helps.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is where we, next, we have building department. Building department, last year, $103,199. This year, $116,214. Gas inspector went from $5,808 to $5,912. Sealer in weights and means. Measure, sorry. Reading too fast. $5,817 last year. This year, $7,305.
Fifty.
Fifty dollars, yeah. The numbers start to bleed together. Wiring inspector, $8,306 last year. This year, $8,447. Plumbing inspector, last year, $7,547. This year, $7,685. Emergency management, $2,250 level. Animal control, last year was $10,210, sorry, $10,210. This year, $13,149. Sure.
Jim explained it.
Yeah, so I have a-- Do you have a, do you wanna, Patty or do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so it's, as Patty mentioned before, Jim couldn't be here tonight, but he said, so our previous animal control officer resigned several months ago, and now the state is having us require additional certifications. I'm assuming we were grandfathered in with the other person. So there's additional training, 15 credit hours of licensure. And then because we had, we also had an existing employee of Tri-Town who took that position over, that changed the fringe in retirement as well, which was about 2,500, so.
So they're not gonna be Tri-Town anymore?
No, they're, they're still, the animal inspector is still with, with Tri-Town, but it's just Lee and Lennox, I believe, though.
So is the $13,000 just the Lee part?
I couldn't hear you.
Is the $13,000 just the Lee part?
Yeah.
But that includes expenses too, not just, all right.
Communications, zero dollars, so.
I don't know why we still have that one.
Can you go back to the building department?
Sure. Yeah, we have a new building commissioner. I don't know if that has anything to do with it.
Yeah, we do have a new building commissioner, and we also have a part-time inspector that's now full-time. And those are also, they're both shared with Lennox as well. And that is our portion of it. They're actually Lennox employees, and we pay Lennox for that portion, even though they are housed in Lee.
So that's our public safety, which for a total last year, $2,371,417. This year, $2,506,411.90. Education, school department, last year, $9,781,424. This year, $10,164,902. Sure. Mike is here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The enrollment has shown a slight decline over the last couple of years. Some of that is attributed to COVID in homeschooling, some of that is attributed to movement within and without Berkshire County. But right now, we stand at 634 students.
And how many new ones do you have?
We're expecting, we're expecting somewhere around four. We had open kindergarten next to us two nights ago, yeah, Wednesday. And we had a number of families there, but that number won't be finalized until the summer.
And there's three classes for either--
All right.
Could you just address us so we can hear too?
The question was, how many, how many students in kindergarten and how many classrooms in a kindergarten? So we're expecting at least 40 students, and there are three kindergarten classes.
DeeDee, did you have--
I just have a short comment, but $383,000 is an increase. This is a huge amount of money. I mean, I don't understand why the school costs rising, rising, rising every single year, and there, and there are fewer students than there used to be.
I don't have a simple answer to that question, although I think it's a very real one. But the combination of the answer there, I think, is that our expenses are going up. Our obligations for our students increase. We are in contractual negotiating year right now, so we are working with all of our bargaining units to satisfy new contracts for next year. So there's natural increases that are happening, happening with that. Transportation costs have gone up. Again, in staffing, we're cognizant of, I think, the question about where we are with enrollment and whether it's, whether we need to staffing or not. I would suggest that we've made a hard push to bring more school choice students in from surrounding communities. And one of the things that's attractive to Lee Public Schools is class size. So we are trying to balance the equitable, you know, nature of cost to the, to the town, to the community, and the benefits that our students are afforded into smaller class size.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. On to public works. DPW Administrator, last year, $45,230, and this year, $46,625. Highway construction and maintenance, $383,410 last year. This year, $427,808. Snow and ice, last year, $451,841. This year, $511,867.
Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
So we're required to have snow and ice, so often times the budget is either over or under.
Right.
And how is the history been? Is this fully funded, or do we expect this might be 90%? So there might be something from free cash that's gonna have to go towards the government.
I don't have, is Alan here? Yeah, Alan, do you, can you speak to that at all?
Al's about to DPW superintendent. That line item right there obviously has escalated for various reasons. Just overall the cost of maintenance repairs of the streets, overall the cost of fuel, lots of salaries. It's really been really hurt down by the pandemic and prices for repair cars and so on and so forth. That's where it really did make it that last year than we would expect. It's not the, that we're doing more salt paint and so on and so forth. It's just the overall cost of materials and everything.
Snow and ice. Street lighting, that was, that held level at $76,500. Forestry, last year, $37,400. This year, $42,400. Sanitary-- Forestry is tree care, so. Yeah, okay. Sanitary landfill, last year, $24,150. This year, $21,730.
Al can speak, I believe, testing, right?
Correct, that's testing and landfill, and based on test results, they actually eliminated one of the series of testing that we had.
Parks and playgrounds, last year, $20,151. This year, $23,241. It's that public building, the Aaralbee Building. So last year, $29,890,000. This year, $30,046.
Currently, the Aaralbee buildings being used for Tri-Town Health Department and Food Pantry, is it being used for any other department at this time? I think the DPW, you know, right?
The DPW still uses part of it. The administrative assistant is at the town hall. And, and Al actually has space in both buildings as well, but, and then they have filing over there. We also have the, the Veterans Agent is there, and--
Tri-Town though?
Yeah, we mentioned Tri-Town.
I couldn't hear.
And then there is a, a area that's used by the police as well, so, yeah. Mostly for storage, but, yeah.
That's the Aaralbee Building. So Memorial Hall, last year, $50,565. This year, $50,721. The cemetery, $87,019. And this year, $90,259. So that's a total public works budget of last year, it was $1,205, $205, $952. This year, $1,321,199. Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the snow and ice? Is that fully funded, or do we have to put more money into the snow and ice?
For 2022, it is, that was a little under on 2022.
So my question is, why the large increase to snow and ice if we--
Oh, I mean, we, the amount was under, so we, it was, we spent more than what was--
How much more?
We have that number. Al, I can check.
So I'm just trying to get a reference point for this year.
Yeah. I could take a look and get back to you.
So we are down to health and human services. So the Board of Health, that's level at $765. Tri-Town Health, so this is broken out into, there's a couple different numbers here, but it looks like our share went last year from $139,496 to now this year, $146,344. And then you have the total, because we're Tri-Town down there, so that's, that's our share, and it's not an equal one-third.
Percentage.
Yeah, it's percentages, so. Porch light, VNA, nothing there. The Breen Center, level at $2,867. Community health program, level at $1,250. Cable Advisory Committee, level at $150. Council on Aging, last year, $68,252. This year, $70,431. Lee Youth Association, $54,873. This year, $58,459.
Can I just ask about that for a second? Is that for salary, or what does that money go toward to the Lee Youth Association? Is it a salary?
Nick probably--
Does it pay the director?
Peter doesn't, I mean, if Chris doesn't.
Oh, sorry, I was looking up that other--
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, believe, yes.
The Lee, so we're on the, we're on the Lee Youth Association. The question is, what exactly is that money for? Salaries or?
Yeah, I believe salaries, and there may be some supply items.
Yeah, some supply items, yeah, okay. We can take a harder look at that as well and get back to you.
It's actually only $3,500.
Yeah. So then, then we have the Veteran Services, $76,248. And this year, it went up to $76,397.
Can you explain what that's spent for, please?
Veteran services, yeah.
That's, that's mostly the salary of our Veterans Agent.
He does what?
So he's there at the Aaralbee Building, I believe, on Mondays. And I'm not sure if there's any, if Doug is here tonight. I don't see him, but. So he's a, he's a Veterans Agent. I don't know his, you know, a whole lot of specifics of, but I know he does assist with veterans' benefits and things of that nature, so.
Yeah.
Do you have something you want to add, Patty?
No.
He does several towns as well. He does Lee on Mondays, and then he does another town on Monday, Tuesday, and so forth. I believe that's the bulk of it, yeah.
That's what?
Does any of these things matter for holidays?
No, those are, also, the benefits are included in that. I mean, it's not just salary. It's everything to do with the office. And I believe some of the benefits to the veterans are included in that also.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that line item is the benefits as well as, as the salary for the veterans. Yeah, yeah.
Yep, I had a question.
Gordon.
If I could, a question on the Cable Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
I know when I was in town hall, they have a little questionnaire to fill out. Is that the same group we're talking about, that they're, they're about to go under negotiations? Do you expect this to really stay at 150, and won't they have? I mean, are we underfunding them, because if they're just about to go under negotiations?
Yeah, they have a separate special revenue account for lawyers and so forth in the negotiation. Right, yeah, there's a special revenue for that, yeah. So they did actually put in for, we may need to allocate some more money the next time around, but that was still enough for what they asked for, which I believe was a couple thousand dollars. but that was still enough for what they asked for, which I believe was a couple thousand dollars from each of the five towns towards attorney fees, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to a total of, um, last year, three hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and two dollars. This year, three hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars. Now we're at.
Recreation.
Recreation and culture. Um, Lee Library, last year, two hundred and ninety-four thousand fifty-four dollars, this year, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Sandy Beach, last year, fifty thousand six hundred and three dollars, sixty-one, this year, sixty-one thousand one hundred and three dollars.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm going to tell it to District Four, so I love the beach, but I do have a question about the increase.
Sure, so the question was about the increase.
Yeah, so, um, in the past, we've had someone at the gate for, I believe it was three days, the, uh, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and this increases the gate staff to the full seven days.
But now, there's another two thousand later on, okay, there's another two thousand later on, so what's that for?
That's been an annual appropriation, like, extraordinary, uh, fees like we have for other departments, um, and if there was any repairs or things that wasn't expected in the budget, so.
So Al will speak about this again, I guess, at the town meeting, but I love the beach, but, um, I'm just trying to, because, like during the week, there's not many people going through there and to have, to meet somebody at the, at the gate every day, just weekends, absolutely.
Yeah.
Every day, that seems, that seems like a huge ten thousand dollars to protect the area.
Yeah.
Well, that.
And, and I'm still worried about that, they could pull in the road where I bought my car, I mean, I go very, very, very slowly, carefully.
So they, it was, um, that was a requirement of the owners of the road that we have while it's open, that we have a, someone there at the gate, so. I mean, our other option would be to close it on those days, but.
It's a horrible, horrible situation because, because we're paying a lot of money and that, this has nothing to do with the owner. I'm just saying, in terms of what town says, it's a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
An overwhelming.
Really need it monitored during the week.
Yeah.
But an overwhelming amount of residents and taxpayers want the beach in operation.
Oh, I do too, I use it.
DeeDee, you had a question?
I guess mine is a question too. Is this the requirement then of the access road owners that has all happened?
I think that's what they said.
Is that part of our easement?
It's part of the negotiation with them.
So.
So this is negotiated, is it?
Oh, we, we, it's really not negotiated, I mean, but.
Well, how do, how do these, um, conversations take place then? We, we're not privy to this.
They.
So in the office, you talk to you about it, when the public should all be in on this?
Well, it's a privately owned road, so we, we have no control over the access to that, so that's what was asked, so. And that's what we have to provide if we want to use it, so.
Has it ever, uh, uh, you know, have you ever thought in mind yourself that maybe it might be in the best interest of the county to acquire the rights to the road and permanently so that we may have, um, greater use of this wonderful resource as a gift?
Actually, that's been brought up, DeeDee, and it's been dismissed, at least up to now.
Am I, am I before, you're more?
No.
No, not ours in particular, probably before us even. You, you, you want us to acquire a road that, um, runs over a dam, which then we would be responsible for, which is not something the town wants to do. Um, it's not to say that every year we can't come up with something or talk about it, but.
I'm just saying that I think it needs more imaginative thinking to get around this rather than get this in this stalemate year after year after year.
Yeah, I, I understand, yeah.
Good thought.
We, we are. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, well, I have spoken with other attorneys in other states and there are other legal options to pursue. Would you like me to present those to you at some later point in time?
I think we'd be interested in, in anything that you, you know, you could, uh, offer us to take a look at, yeah, for sure. Because this is a, this is a problem, we've, I mean, it's an issue, we're kind of at the mercy of the, of the land, the person who owns the property and we have an easement and this is part of the, the agreement with that easement to have it staffed, when, when it's open.
You could do eminent domain, you could take the road, but you pay fair market value for whatever the claim is for that and that's typically, um, and Berkshire County's famous for jury awards that are pretty on the high end when you take property. But then we have the dam and we take access to property that we don't own, so.
Yeah.
In the past, that's why whenever that discussion has come up, it's led to a dead end, literally, because we don't own the property that we're taking an access to. So tomorrow, Hy-Lon could say can't use the beach anymore and we can't go there.
So it's based on that thing, I'm just gonna.
I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know why it's been rejected, but it's come up.
I was just gonna say, in all these years, eight, five years, Hy-Lon Farms never refused us the use of the beach, so that's kind of a really slim, slim.
Right, but are you, are, you'll agree with me that our use of the beach for Hy-Lon is permissive, right? It's permissive.
They actually required a lease.
That's right, but it's permissive, so we use it with their permission, right?
Right.
So we don't have an adverse claim against their beach and we're never taking the beach from Hy-Lon Farm. I mean, we get a wallop in that we'd never forget if we did that, so. So, so, if we take, if we take the, the access, we're taking access to land we don't own and we can do that. But every time it's come up, when we get into the specifics, it kind of falls apart.
Well, let's push another time, thank you.
If you wanted imaginary, uh, imagi, uh, sorry. I don't know, I forget how you phrased it, but if you wanted, uh, uh, some more thinking about it, you know, we could, we, imaginative, that's the word, sorry. But I mean, there's a piece of property around the corner, Edith Warren Park, that was gifted to both towns for the use of, the purposes to be a beach.
Oh, we are going there tonight.
But that's imaginative thinking, so I'm just, I'm offering it up. Because we actually own that property and it would be easier to access, so I'm just, you know.
Does it, do we have that need prior to that, requires monitoring seven days a week?
Exactly.
Does it have any cause for?
I, I think, I think we can all agree that that's not necessary.
Yeah.
But we don't have, we don't have.
Oh, I, I understand.
We don't have a bargaining position here. I mean, we're kind of, we kind of have to do what is required for the permission or we have to look into other options and I, you know, yeah, we're going real far down the rabbit hole, but yeah, that land that, that Sean is talking about, that was used with money for the purposes of creating a public beach specifically.
A recreational area.
No, it was a.
Beach, beach.
Look at the old, look at the old records.
Dick's tables.
Yeah.
But guess what, if it brought to show that it would never be accommodated.
I'm not saying, I don't, I'm not saying I know one way or the other, DeeDee, I, I know that the beach is awesome, it's a beautiful place, but the real crazy thing about it, the difficult thing, is we don't own any of it. We don't own the beach, we don't own the access to it.
Monica?
What, what, when is becoming reasonable? If they want to put a traffic light in the dam, is that unreasonable?
It's, it's, it's the day that, it's the day that the legislators, who are you guys and women, when you say, no, we're not gonna do that.
You don't have to approve this fund, to fund this.
Monica?
Thanks, Patty. So we did go down the road by Edith Warren Park and let in some shares of property, but that said no. So we have, have we paid it to the town because of property blocks away? So we already invested that in money. I'll speak louder, I don't know if it's, um, if it's my.
That's not true.
But I'll speak louder. Um, now getting back to the original question about the money that we're spending on the gate. Now, originally, when we worked with a landowner or someone's dam, um, we had a certain number of hours where we had a gatekeeper there and it's actually somebody at the police department, and those wages, and it's only on the weekends, because that's really what it was needed. During the weekend, hardly anybody there, just a few people with a light bar unless it's a busy day or for the blood. So we never really needed more than that, but what happened is during COVID, we had restricted the number of people that were allowed on the beach at a certain point when we reopened the beach, where we had closed for a while. When we reopened, we had to limit the number of people who were allowed on the beach. So we had to have a monitoring system every day to find out how many people were coming on, so we didn't go over the allowable limit. And so at that point, we started to staff the gate all day, every day, you know, every hour of every day so that we could monitor it. We don't need to do that, we haven't needed to do that in quite a while. So I would love to go back to the old method of just having a gatekeeper on the weekends only and if that's the only reason we had increased it, because we had to, you know, self-monitor ourselves, that reason is not away. I feel that there is no reason now to have a gateperson there for so many hours, especially at the wages that we have to pay. We're not paying, uh, you know, a kid who's on a summer job and somebody of the police, the police department, that's the requirement by the law. So, you know, I just, I would like to, you know, whoever's negotiating with that, maybe next year, we talked to, maybe this year, we talked about maybe trimming back a few hours maybe during this, because we keep track of the hours of how many people are there. We can look at records and see what the high times are and the low times are for, for guests on the beach. And we can pick, you know, it's pretty much the same, you know, I mean, even unless it's, um, a rainy day or something. But, so I would just still suggest that we're trying to go back to less hours there with a gatekeeper there, um, and just keep it on the weekends. So whoever is negotiating this, we could ask them to try and return to the old ways, unless they have a, a reason that we, that they feel that we need to have somebody sitting there when there's literally nobody going by them for a few hours at a time. So whoever's doing the negotiating, I would just like to put that in copper.
Okay, we can do that, we, but for this year coming forward, it's this budget or no, not open. Because again.
I just have the answer on the snow and ice with sixty thousand, with a thirty thousand surplus of salt. Sorry.
Can I also ask another question with it? Um, the hours, the hours will also seem to be less each year, if they'll be able to use it, and so, yeah.
I'm not aware that the hours have changed, hours of use, yeah.
It was less hours last year, because I know I couldn't go because I go to work.
Well, that might have been because of COVID too. I don't know what the hours are this year, I haven't seen anything out yet.
It was ten to seven maybe?
That's what it used to be, but then it changed to twelve, this six.
Well, and that could be because, again, the owners of the road had asked for a change in hours, but I don't know, I don't, excuse me, DeeDee, I'm just trying to answer, I don't know that that was done, but I believe it was, but I'd have to get the information back.
They can negotiate to be open more hours with this increase of ten thousand dollars.
Might be negotiating.
I paid him to go out here on the record that twelve, at twelve o'clock, the beach opened in, in other years, because that's not the case.
In what?
I would just.
In other years, that was not the case. I agree with you, they, it wasn't the case.
Ten to seven, it was ten, right? Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the beach? Um, cultural council, level at four thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, historical commission, level at four hundred and eighty-five dollars. War memorials, level at two thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, that brings us to a total of, um, last year, three hundred and fifty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars, this year, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, now we have debt service, so our long-term debt services, you can see here, um, P.
Is that, is there, are these, uh?
Principal.
Principal, oh, I see.
Principal and interest.
Um, so our principal, it, uh, went from eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Interest last year was thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, this year, twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And our short-term debt level at thirty-one hundred dollars. So that brings us to a total debt service. Last year, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, this year, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So our, next is our intergovernmental, um, budget.
Bless you.
Berkshire regional planning, um, and a slight increase last year, four thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars, this year, four thousand eight hundred and seven dollars total, and that's the total, so. We have no fixed costs and we have, oh, no, those are the fixed costs, I see, employee benefits. Medicare last year was one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars, this year, one hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Berkshire City Retirement, one million, one million three hundred and seventy-six dollars last year, this year, one million forty, uh, one million forty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Health insurance, that is level at three million one hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Life insurance, last year fifteen thousand, this year sixteen thousand forty-five dollars. Workers' comp, last year, a hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars, this year, a hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Police, um, medical, two, uh, level at two thousand thirty-three dollars. No Medicare B penalty and that brings us to a total of four million four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, uh, thirty-eight thousand fifty dollars last year and then this year, four hundred and forty, four hundred, four million four hundred and ninety-five thousand and one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Sure, go ahead, Chris.
Um, just, we got the breakdown on the veterans agent as well, someone had asked about, um, the salary or the stipend for the agent is seven thousand six hundred. There's a supply budget of seven hundred and fifty and then the rest, the sixty-eight thousand seven fifty is the veterans' benefits that are paid out, so. I just wanted to do the breakdown.
Good, thank you. Um, yes?
Um, I'm sorry, do you want to help ensure, or on, uh, the health insurance, do you agree we'll keep it the same?
This year.
Yeah.
Luck. Luck.
I don't know, I wish Lindsay was here.
It's all based on.
Probably did a multi-year contract, right?
No, Donna? I saw you sneak in, can you help?
Well, I think that we, over the years, we've, we've, um, changed plans and we've, um, changed the benefits, so, um, it's reflected in our rates this year. Now, we have a deduct, well, we don't have a deduct, but we have higher pay. Um, we actually moved, um, we have retirees on it also. We moved them to what we call Medicare plus plans and that reduced the cost of their insurance a lot, the town's insurance, so, um, that's reflected in there. So we are, the last, I'd say, two or three years, we've definitely got veterans, this year was great.
Thank you, Donna.
Okay, so I think now we're down to insurances. Liability, so general, um, liability last year, one hundred and twelve thousand sixty-six dollars, this year, one hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
And that's also property insurance.
Property insurance too. Um, and then we have down here, police and fire accident, um, level at sixty thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. So is that our subtotal, okay, so I, I kind of, this is broken out a little different here, but, um, so our subtotal for the insurance is a hundred, last year, a hundred and seventy-three thousand fifty-six dollars, this year, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So that combined with our, um, with our benefits, employee benefits, goes to the total fix, um, of four million six hundred and eleven, uh, six hundred and eleven, one hundred and six dollars last year and we're at four million six hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars this year. So our total operating budget, this ye, uh, last year, twenty thou, twenty million seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and this year, we're up to twenty-one million six hundred and twenty-seven dollar, uh, six hundred and twenty-seven, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And that is Article Four. Yes.
Do we have any idea what the potential tax impact is on the budget?
Good question.
Forgotten there.
Yeah, so, obviously, there's a lot of factors in that with new growth and property values and so forth. But our, our predictions before new growth were one point one seven and after a conservative estimate of new growth at point one four percent.
I don't know what those numbers.
I think it needs to tack the actual.
He, oh. The increase of, on the, with the tax levy increase of point one four percent.
So, I don't know if that answered your question, Dick, because I think you were wondering about the impact-
The dollar amount?
I'm talking about dollars and cents.
You're talking about the dollar amount.
Single family home, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
I have the percentage, but I'd have to check that number for you. So, I'll get back to you on that.
So, and just to be clear, Chris was giving us the tax levy percentage increase, right?
Right.
Yeah.
After new growth.
After new growth. And then I'll do five.
You're spelling number five.
Okay.
Well, new growth is new houses, renovations, additions.
Businesses, commercial.
Commercial and residential.
Pot shops. Lots of pot shops.
Yeah, we only got one, really.
That's all it takes.
Article Five, Omnibus Fiscal Year 2023 General Fund Capital Budgets. So, this is the capital outlay committee, and the finance committee recommends approval. And this is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds or any sum, sums of money for capital expenditures of the several departments of the town as follows. So, Town Hall Security Cameras, thirty thousand dollars. And if anybody, anytime wants to pause, let me know. I'm just going to go down through these. Youth Commission, ten thousand dollars. Fire EMS, paving, seventy-eight thousand dollars. Sandy Beach, two thousand dollars. DPW, yeah. This is, this was mentioned before. It's sort of an above and beyond, just in case there's a, yeah, there's something that maintenance we need to do.
You know, there was a lot more weeds last year. It was really hard to swim. So, I hope this goes forward.
The, the, part of the increase in the overall budget for the beach did include extra money for weeds as well. It was not all for the gate. It was, yeah.
Next, we have DPW Paving Plan, seventy-four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. DPW Mechanic Equipment, thirty thousand dollars. DPW Plow Trucks, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. DPW Pickup Truck, forty thousand dollars. DPW Cemetery Mower, twenty-three thousand dollars. DPW Extraordinary Repair, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Town Buildings Contingency, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Town Buildings Memorial Hall, twenty thousand dollars. And we got the library at seven thousand five hundred dollars. And then the high school bleachers are required to be replaced, and that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the public schools, the public schools, a hundred thousand dollars. Not sure what that lasts.
Yeah, we instituted a few years ago on the town side of putting away a hundred thousand dollars per year for school use that might come up as over, way over anything that they could afford without going to town meeting. And I guess that's the easiest way I can say it. What?
Unexpected.
Unexpected, yeah.
A bunch of questions.
Sure.
One is, what did we spend last year compared to this year? Have you laid out next five year anticipated?
We do have a capital, five-year capital plan.
Yeah, in the packets, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
So, if the public school doesn't spend a hundred thousand, does it go back?
It stays with us in the town. We're trying to build it up. I don't, I believe that's the fund, right? Excuse me?
You're setting aside a fund?
Yes.
What's the balance now?
Can't tell you right now.
For the, for the school.
The balance of free cash?
No, this hundred thousand, if you're-
If we don't use it, does it go back to free cash or are we keeping it in a special?
Are we talking about the hundred thousand for the school? They typically use the whole hundred thousand. Otherwise, yeah.
So, the decision to use the hundreds, you're saying?
So, they're allocated that sum and they will, Mr. Sharp, but they allocate, we are allocating that sum and they are able to use that sum of money for projects that are most, you know, critical for that. Yeah. I think he can speak to it right now.
The school department has a capital budget plan where all of our expected capital projects are outlined. We'd be happy to post that to our website if you take a look at. The expectation for the school department should, these money be approved at town meeting? Our original plan and expectation has been to, we need a new vehicle, and that's four, four fifty to five fifty. We've been told by the four dealerships that those are two to three years out. As, yeah, as such, the school department re-prioritized our capital needs and we would plan to invest that in a Lee Elementary School play.
Okay. Is everybody all right? Dick?
The, Alex, about how we explained the, what the two hundred and twenty thousand is for the car trucks, is that, is that repairs? Are we buying a new truck?
That money gets put in there to, what, in two scenarios where we're trying to save the amount of votes to five fifty, is it?
One for sure.
Just my, what, um, what you're on it for?
Sure.
Oh, really?
He'll get killed.
Oh, okay. I will.
I told him wait till he retires.
So, if you look, they're buying a single truck for two hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah, we go to large trucks. The other scenario is a smaller truck. We're getting that two hundred and five.
I do too. I'll never, not until someone gets a leg, you know, on the ballot if they want to.
Yeah, Anne? Go ahead, Anne.
I just had a question. Wasn't there a truck just recently purchased by someone in the DPW?
Wasn't there?
There was, there was, yeah. Truck was picked.
The five fifty, you have the DPW, you share it throughout the whole world. It's actually had a roof that needs a four-wheel drive. You know, it's got the empty sections of the town and so forth, the circular avenues, the tunnel mill and so forth. There was also a pickup, I think I want to refer to that, a pickup that was used at the DPW. It's a two-story roll, right there right now. The DPW, it's a, um, it's a, it's a, it's a one truck, the last two-story roll is fully used by that truck. Correct. The other trucks, you're going to purchase, you're sharing. Correct. Fourteen, correct. The only other truck we have purchased is a Ford Ranger. It's a Ford, we have a Ford Ranger right now, that's, that's in position.
I just got a question about the cemetery. I have a few years.
The big thing about this mall we're here that we're purchasing right now, the biggest complaint, one of the complaints we have with the cemetery is that when there's mowing on up there is that the sign discharge is blowing, the grass is blowing, so you get out there early morning, it's wet, the grass is, so forth. So, you dispose, you're rear discharge mark, and a lot of other turnarounds happen. You're also on the basis that now the lease life plan, all the same, the field, the construction, everywhere, the ground, the wood.
Thank you. Everybody ready to move on? Article, Article Six. Article Six, Water Enterprise Fund Operating Capital Budget. Capital Outlay and Finance Committee Recommend Approval. So, for two thousand twenty-three, we're going to, the appropriation is for one million seventy-six thousand seven hundred and three dollars and ninety-one cents, which is paid for through water user fees amounting to one thousand seventy-six thousand seven hundred and three, one million seventy-six thousand seven hundred and three dollars. Article Seven is Waste Water Enterprise Fund Operating Capital Budget. Capital Outlay and Finance Committee Recommend Approval. And in this, in this instance, the total operation and capital expenses is two million three hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And it's provided for with sewer user fees of two million three hundred forty-nine dollars, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and, excuse me, retained earnings, which is also in there to help out. Article Eight. This is a yearly, yearly article that just gives, what?
Just a formality.
Just a formality to allow the Board of Selectmen and other town departments to apply for and accept grants from the federal government, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or any other source.
Quick question from American Rescue. It's not on here. Did we get any American Rescue Plan monies? And do we have any that's over somewhere?
Yep.
Yes. Yes and yes, I think.
Yes.
I think we're still waiting on the second.
Yeah, we haven't gotten the second part.
The first page, but the total is one point six, but the million. Majority of the, you know, there's categories we can use it for. The majority is going into water infrastructure.
Article Nine, Road Repair and Paving. This is actually monies we receive through Chapter Ninety monies, monies. And this just, it's a formality giving us the right to expend it. And Chapter Ninety monies is for roadwork from the state. Gordon?
Just another question on the ARPA money that was just brought up. Does that have to come before the town reps for approval? Or is that already built into the budget?
No.
Is it separate, ARPA, or just?
Neither, yeah. Yeah, it's separate. And it doesn't go before town meeting, and it doesn't affect this budget. It's over above that.
All right, thank you.
It's determined by how much road you have.
I have a question. It's not under this, but we used to have a separate article for the bridge repair.
For what?
Bridge repairs. And I don't know where that goes on now.
Do we have a separate article? Is that what you're asking? I don't think so, Zippy. Bridge repair?
We have an account for a bridge repair.
But we haven't, we're not asking for any money out of this year's budget for it.
Chapter Ninety for bridges, what I think you're referring to is when we have specific bridge projects, we have to match what the state's going to do. Usually, the state is doing most of the funding, but you have to pay for consulting and the title work on the bridges.
There's two bridges right now the state is giving us funding for, possibly a third one. Correct me if I wrong, yeah.
There's two on Meadow Street, lots of applied and other grants. On Meadow Street, crossing drakes, that over line pipe, going through there. The state is in a five-year program to replace the bridge on Hill Street.
Article Ten. And this is Omnibus Fiscal Year Twenty-Three General Fund Operating Budgets. Finance Committee has recommended approval. So, these are funds to, we're going to vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, sums. This is, I believe, is this the last bond payment for the paving?
Well, this is the start of the one.
The start of the new one?
Yeah.
Okay. Bond payment for paving the roads, one hundred and seventy-one thousand. Bond payment, fire EMS, one hundred and forty-five thousand. Chamber of Commerce Advertising, forty-six, five. Chamber of Commerce Gateway Downtown, ten thousand dollars. And this is new, the Historical Commission matching funds to the, that we are going to raise to match a grant that the Historical Commission has gone after, sixteen thousand.
Just a clarification on that one.
Sorry.
We did sixteen thousand last year. This year is sixteen thousand. So, last year's was our contribution. We put in sixteen thousand this year, and we will get reimbursed that from the state.
Okay. Sorry. MEMA Mitigation Plan, seven thousand five hundred. Laurel Lake Preservation Association, two thousand five hundred. Berkshire Brown Fields, two thousand dollars. Fireworks for Founder's Day, one thousand dollars. Bike Path Land Title Work, three thousand dollars. And the VFW One Hundredth Anniversary, eleven thousand dollars.
Why is this, are these items not in the general fund budget that we talked about earlier? Why, why are these listed separately and not in the general fund budget or the capital budget?
It's a, well, uh-
Yeah, two, one, one is that they are not attached to a specific department.
Right.
And the other is that this is typically done from free cash, not to raise an appropriate.
Do we have a free cash number at this point? We don't raise taxes for this? Is that what you're saying?
Right. It's all free cash appropriations. Right now, free cash certified is two million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven.
Can I ask what the VFW One Hundredth Anniversary is all about?
Yeah, so, this is their one-hundredth anniversary in, in two thousand twenty-two of our local VFW. I don't want to say chapter. It's the wrong word. The posts. And so, they have a memorial park right next to the library with monuments. And the VFW requested we add an additional stone monument there for the one-hundredth anniversary, which would recognize the commanders of the post over the last hundred years. So, I do have a picture here if anyone wants, but it's black and white. And it's a tall, like, like a mini version of the Washington Monument. It's like that shape.
Okay. Everybody all right with that? Article Eleven, Community Center, which will require a two-thirds vote. Finance Committee does not recommend approval. And you can, everyone can read it themselves. This is to vote, to rate, vote to appropriate twelve million five hundred thousand dollars. If it passes, it'll have to go to a general election. It will be a, an exclusion from the tax rate for the life of the loan.
Exclusion from the allowable increase.
Has anyone determined the annual cost of that?
Yes. I don't know if we got flyers over there.
The second to last page of the packet, there's a, there's a summary which shows the cost of the building and then the operating costs. And it's based on a year-five cost when things kind of level out. So, that total operating at nine hundred and seven thousand five twenty, potential revenue from the feasibility study was, was a little more than half of that. So, the projected subsidy from the town, four hundred and twenty-four thousand five fifty-three.
This is Article Eleven. Did the selectmen vote for this or support this?
This is coming from the Youth Commission, who have done the feasibility study. They've, they've done a lot, put a lot of work and time and effort into, you know, this, this whole facility.
Did the selectmen support it?
We have not voted to support it. We voted to put it in front of this body.
Okay, so you're, you're not making a recommendation on raising?
Not at this point, no. Kathy, would you like to say something?
Even though I have a big mouth, I'll come up to the speaker. So, yeah, the Lee Youth Commission has done quite a bit of work on this, but I would like to preface it with the old comprehensive master plan, August two thousand. And in this, there's a reference for, let me see, page twenty-seven, if you don't mind. We've taken some time here. Indoor Recreation. The analysis of community needs reveals that there are serious deficiencies in the range of available recreation programs and facilities in the town of Lee. Two surveys conducted in the last several years indicate that recreation- Two surveys conducted in the last several years indicate that recreational needs are not being met for residents across the board, particularly for the disabled and young adults. In the nineteen ninety-eight community-wide survey, indoor programs were seen as inadequate for teens and adults. So that was way back in two thousand. The most recent thing, the open space and recreation plan, twenty sixteen. There's also references to a community center. And if I can get to the page, please bear with me, because it's really important. Why am I not finding it? I'm sorry. Page two. Lee is deficient in meeting many of the recreational needs of its population. Particular attention needs to be paid to the development of recreation programs for all age groups and to maintain, maintenance of its facilities, including the provision of modern, safe equipment that is accessible to people with disabilities. And then it goes on, page eighty-two, I'm sorry. I can't find these. I'm too old for this.
Just while, while you're looking, Kathy, there is some information on the town website. We had a, the Barry Dunn associates who did the actual study and, and put together the numbers for this, and there was a few different options.
Yeah, I, I actually read that.
Oh, okay.
I was just wondering if the selectmen would support this.
Well, the only thing, yeah.
Obviously not.
At this point, well, they need to look at one picture, the finance committee has to look at another, and the townspeople have to look at another. So there's many pieces to this puzzle. So in this other document, to provide excellent indoor recreational facilities that are easily accessible. So in looking over these documents, especially the ones, the open space and rec plan, because we're, we're working on that this year because it needs to be revamped, I was so pleased at one of the pages that says, to provide and maintain a variety of passive, I don't want that one, that we have done, and our goal, that the Lee Youth Commission began phase one of implementing expanded indoor facilities, and we had from two, twenty eighteen to two twenty-two. So we're actually on board in terms of our plans for the town for recreation. We know that this is a huge amount of money. We're not saying that it isn't, but we are cognizant of the town, of the needs, and what people have wanted, and certainly the need of one of the important things, which is a basketball court. So we are just saying we acknowledge it, but a regional, multi-generational community center for all would have an immediate positive impact on quality of life and wellness goals for our town and surrounding areas. We are one of the few towns in this area that does not have a community center where the whole community can come together for activities and socializing. We do know we need a two-thirds vote for the warrant to pass. If the vote is approved, then we will look into all available, available funding sources to defray the cost to the taxpayers. So we really hope that you will think about it, that you will look at the documents on the website. There is the results of the first survey that was done with Berkshire Regional Planning. There's also the presentation of Barry Dunn, of, of what it would entail. And, you know, we're talking a community center that would have two basketball courts, regulation size, but multipurpose. It's not just, we call in a basketball court because people can imagine what a basketball court is, but multipurpose, so that we can have indoor soccer, we could have indoor, you know, volleyball, we could have all kinds of things. Two community rooms that would be separated by a curtain. So if you wanted to have a big, like maybe a wedding, open up that curtain so you could have a wedding there. Or people could have, you know, the school could have their prom there, or whatever, or different activities for teenagers. A wellness center for the elderly. We would love, 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 love to have been able to put a pool in there, because there's so much you can do with a pool and the money that would come in from a pool, teaching children how to swim, having adults, having the elderly go in for physical therapy, that type of thing. But it's, it's not gonna happen right now. And then the administration space and locker space. So, so much that can bring forth so much to our community. So I'm just asking if you will just do due diligence, as we have, in checking out this and seeing if it's a possibility, or at least bringing it to the point where the town can vote yes or no. Because that's what we really want, is, you know, the townspeople. We know that it's a, it's, the tax impact is a lot, but we also know that this is something that's been going on for years and years and years. So we'd, we'd like to have the opportunity to bring it forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathy. Mary?
Yes, I have just one question for Kathy also, because in all the data I've read, I don't see any admission charge or what the membership fee would be, like per family or per individual.
Right.
Has that been determined?
We have talked about it, because we also have a business plan. And the thing is that depending on how many people, it might be twenty-five dollars a month, but we've talked about a sliding scale, because we want everybody to have an opportunity. There certainly would be higher rates for people outside of Lee. But, you know, we're, again, we're very cognizant of our demographics here in Lee, and what people tend to pay off the board. And we're cognizant of households that have one child versus households that have six children. So, yes, we've looked at all of that.
And your potential revenue is four eighty-two a year?
Yes, depending on, you know, what we end up with programs. For example, we might bring in more revenue if we have the two regulation-sized basketball courts. Instead of Lee having to pay to go to Adams or Cheshire or whatever for their tournament, we could have tournaments here in Lee, and money would come in to us rather than Lee spending money out to them. That's just a small example.
I saw some hands, and, oh, go ahead, Gordon.
No, go ahead.
In the back, Diane, do you wanna say something?
I am in favor of a community center. The location gives me a great concern. Nobody can walk, there's sidewalks, it's not close to the schools, it's not close to downtown. That's my biggest concern, and I did read everything. And I know that the, there was a firm that recommended that location. So the question is, was it recommended because the town owned that property?
Yes. Number one, because it's huge. It's a hundred seventy-one acres, if I'm not mistaken. It is, when we researched, okay, all the town property in, in the town of Lee, there's quite a few of things, they weren't big enough, or they were on wetlands or floodplains, you know, there were all types of obstacles with that. So the best property...
Right, but that's the best town property.
Yes.
That doesn't preclude selling town property and purchasing something that's more central. So if you look at the otherwise and the other community centers, they're accessible, and this is not accessible.
Right, but where in Lee, is there accessible property?
How long if we attempt to approach by shopper? Maybe they'll give us a discount, and we'll take a tax break?
Are there...
Are you a bullseye?
Right. All right, so there were two more questions. Gordon, wait a minute.
I do think...
Did you have a question, Anne?
No, I just wanted to...
Okay. Gordon was next.
I'm just, I'm just pointing out that there will be residents that are not for it, not because they're not for a community center, but the location makes it difficult to move. So working parents, if they wanna send their kid to an after-school program or on the weekend, everybody's driving up and down Stockbridge Road.
But we have, we have buses that can do that. You know, we have transportation. We're thinking about that. We still have monies in our feasibility study to figure all of that out.
Okay, okay, let's, let's move on and get some other, 'cause we're, we're not gonna solve it tonight. Gordon was next.
I think my, my biggest concern is the Stockbridge location, Stockbridge Road. I'm all for a community center at some point. There are other properties in town I think we could be looking at that are big enough. One is on Graylock Street. We could even, I know there's issues with the Graylock mill, and, you know, they, they got permission to do a grow facility. That's not moving forward, but there's thirty-five or more acres right next to it that could be something that's viable within walking distance of the, of the high school and the elementary school. I just think that, again, at some point, I'd love to vote for a community center for this town with everything you're talking about. But I think we could do, do a little bit more due diligence on location and not worry about only town property, but to purchase some property or, you know, the mill itself, if the Graylock people would sell that. You know how many square feet of enclosed property that is? And, and I'm just saying that, let's look at a little bit more options. I, I don't think I'm comfortable with the Stockbridge Road, but I, I don't wanna say I'm against community center, 'cause I'm not. You know, so, that's all.
Okay. Jim?
This is just...
Jim?
I just had a question. This could be on the ballot in November for the people.
If, if this...
If it passes.
If this passes the two-thirds, it goes to a referendum on the ballot.
If it does pass, is it gonna be a non-binding vote?
Binding.
No, it would be binding at that point. Somebody over here had their hand up, Anne, before. Cornelia?
Yeah, I had said, I had said the very same thing on that, my survey, actually, about the location. Just wanna say that from the start. And, and also, in the meantime, if this doesn't go through, I don't, how about the high school gym?
The problem is, the high school gym is not public. You can't, that's what, that's what we're, that's what this town kinda...
And they do use the gym now for, for the youngsters, for the younger. I think we're talking about increased use. Anne?
I just had a question for Al. Is, just a ballpark figure, if there's no water in the sewer up there already on Stockbridge Road, what would that addition cost to put in for a community center that's...
That's put into the cost, too.
Okay. Is there a sidewalk included in that cost? I'm sorry, I did not look online.
No, no, that's okay. But again, the sidewalk, the whole traffic thing, all of that is still in a feasibility study. We're just looking at this point to try and get the building. It, it's easy enough for us to put, before the town meeting, another location if that's the problem, and we'd be willing to do that. And then also, there are monies that can do, I don't know, to push in a sign. You know, so there's so many things that are so many variables, and pieces of the puzzle. Like right now, we would just like to see that there is money to have a community.
Okay, we're gonna move along here, because unless we have something brand new.
I just wanted to mention, Patty, if anybody's looking for that information...
We have it.
If you go to the main page of the town website, lee dot ma dot U S, the news section is, it's right on the main page. You don't have to click on anything, you can go directly to the community center, and there's three documents there, including the large, I forget how many pages, eighty-page report, and then a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that comes with the selectment, and some other information on...
All right, Monica, last question.
Thank you. Two questions here. Will I be efficient here?
Yes.
Okay, and second question, why did the finance committee not recommend approval? Is there anybody here from the finance committee that's okay?
Yeah.
Just three on your own.
There you go, Nick.
The commission does something. Is anyone here?
Yeah, sure. I, I can represent the finance committee, which is what I actually do. So, I, I mean, I think what, what, you know, we, we took a lot of time considering this issue. This has been a, a topic, you know, for many years now. And we've tried to, we've had proposals, you know, from the youth commission to provide information so that everyone can make a decision at some point. And so there's been a process over years. It's, I don't know if it's ten years, but it's been, certainly been five or six. And during the course of that process, we've recommended that the commission, with Kathy's obviously guidance, gather as much information as we can, because, you know, there, there's no question that an asset like that would be a huge asset to the town, to the kids, to the families, and would really be, you know, a tremendous benefit. So, but having said that, you know, we felt that in order to make a proper decision, an informed decision, we needed sufficient information. At this point in time, I think the commission felt like they had done enough work in order to provide that basis for making a proper decision for everybody here in town. And, you know, the, the, it goes without saying that from an emotional point of view, the finance committee thinks it's a great idea, just like a lot of you do. The finances, however, are the lens that we looked through this strictly. And, you know, the two issues were the potential impact on, on what bond payments would be, okay, annually, which is, we had roughed it out, it's nearly nine hundred thousand dollars a year, would be long-term borrowing. And from that perspective, we're aware of other significant capital projects that are, you know, needs right now, that are currently identified, and are, you know, going to be ones that come up in the short term. And it's, it's very hard to plan for allocating those funds when we know we have other needs that are gonna be significant impacts on a consistent basis, okay? So there's that, plus the fact that, you know, the annual subsidy that would have to be carried by the town in order to offset operating costs are significant. You heard the numbers, I think they're in Kathy's letter. It's nearly nine hundred thousand dollars a year in operating, which is offset by, you know, it's more than, projected more than four hundred thousand dollars a year in income. But for the town to take on that annual estimated subsidy today of, you know, over four hundred thousand dollars really is another significant impact. I mean, we, we did take a look at what the projected impact would be on the tax rate just for, you know, these items alone, and it's, you know, it's nearly four hundred dollars a year. We didn't feel like that was a number that was reasonable at this point in time. Having said that, you know, ultimately, it, it's gonna be up to the reps at this point in time, maybe everybody, to make that decision. You know, a great investment for the town, but does it make sense at this point in time? From a strictly financial point of view, we don't think it's feasible.
I just have one question.
Yes, Kathy?
Is the bond, you know, a twenty-year or a thirty?
That was a twenty.
There's a difference.
I believe they came up with twenty, looking at twenty-year bonds.
So can we look at a thirty?
I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's even acceptable. Okay.
I don't know the answer to that.
Dick, did you have a question? Are you...
So I wanted to hear from the findings, can we do something?
Oh, okay. Okay. So we've, have we beaten that to death enough right now? If anybody needs more information, can always call Chris, and he can tell you where to find it, if you don't have it in your packets. Where are we? Okay, article twelve. All right, now I'm gonna kinda turn it over a little bit here, because the next three, I think, our planning board...
Two.
Two? Just two? Okay.
No, just one.
Just one?
Just one.
Okay. Oh, this is the political sign bylaw revisions that, after our last problem we had last year, the planning board went to work and sat down and came up with this planning, this bylaw. And I believe it was done, I believe it was done with the help of the ACLU, or with their knowledge.
It was done with advice from them by letter.
Advice, okay. So I'm...
Buck is the chair, and he's gonna make the presentation.
Okay, Buck?
Sure.
I'm gonna ask you to make the presentation.
As a lot of you know, last year we had a situation that brought our, our current bylaw to light. Usually we try to be proactive, this one we had to be reactive. Through the help of our board member, Peter Blum, town council, in contact with the ACLU, we came up with this bylaw. And I think it will, it brings us into compliance with certain Supreme Court decisions that have gone on, and free speech bylaws that have been determined, pretty much covering it, Jeremiah?
Pretty much.
And this'll get us, the town, more in line with everything, and hopefully not run into another... into another situation like last year.
Are there any, Lisa?
Jeremiah Buck, in J. one, is lot meaning, or is it just a lot means, he said, when you don't have a voting on it, or what does lot mean in that?
J. one?
Which actually, J. one?
A lot, lot is the parcel property.
Open land.
Open land.
Built upon land, any land.
Okay, Anne?
Since you signed J. one, it says, writ a signed permit. So, that is a pop, so that per, is that correct?
Where are we even?
My answer, Buck?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we have already permits required for business signs.
Business, not...
Right. So, what this, what J. one is saying is that if you have a right to have a business sign, you can use it for political purposes. You can put a message on it and you can, but you still need to get a permit for it because it's gonna be bigger than...
I'm missing a page here.
The water sign. The second one, the second one is...
So, this all has to do with, so I'm confused how it doesn't separate that it's, it's on a business property as opposed to a home property?
No, a business sign will be on a merchant property or a home occupation and residential area.
This is political, so that's like...
Yeah. So, we'll think about it as, let's try it this way. Let's start with the listed signs that require a permit and the signs that have not a permit. Right now, you can have a business sign with the permit, and this allows you to use that sign that you would be entitled to with the permit for any purpose you want, business or with...
So, what you're saying essentially is...
You gotta, you gotta read, read two first. Maybe, maybe one should've come after two.
Oh, read number two.
This is a brand new thing, is that you can have in two.
Yes.
You can have yard signs beyond limit, but only up to six square feet. And they gotta be out of the roadway and on your side of the sidewalk. But that's a new thing. And we think that between these two, nobody can say that will violate the Supreme...
No, no.
Okay, that's what it sounds like.
You can't discriminate against that.
Anne, read number two, as I've been instructed to. Kind of explains it.
Well, basically, it's like businesses has where they can put letters under their sign, put in a particular saying or something. Yeah, I mean, if you, if you have a business, and they'll be, you'll be in a zone, and there'll be rules for the zone about how big the sign can be. And you can decide, you want to allocate half of it to, you know, your favorite message and half of it to your business advertising, or sixty, forty, or ninety, ten, or any way you want to allocate it. But it doesn't get bigger just because you put a message on it. It just gets to that size that's permitted in the zone.
Could you see...
And then also, brand new, you get to put up yard signs here and there, as many as you want.
Could you see a lot of pictures all over the place with businesses and then underneath where they can put the little letters and they can put whatever they want. And that's what, kind of, this is.
Yeah. And you know what, what the Supreme Court really was saying at the most basic level is we can't discriminate against somebody based upon what their sign. And that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to say that you get, there's a size limit, and for the bigger sign, you need a permit. But we're not gonna tell you anything about what you can put on that sign.
Okay. So, for me, I own a business in town. I have my regular business sign, I paid for my permit. In addition, I have two no PCV dump signs in my windows. So, my question is, are you telling me that with this, this first one, okay, with the signed permit, you're telling, you're giving me permission for a political sign they already have permission for?
Read three, please.
It says one sign.
So, Anne, if you're talking about window signs, you can read three.
Three, please.
Are we okay, Anne? I'm gonna take a question back there if I can.
Right, but it still says with a permit, so that...
Without, without, without.
In addition to...
Number one, if you want to conclude, to have a political part on your business sign...
On your business sign.
Right. That's the only permit asking, because it's part of a business.
You need a permit for the business sign. You already have a business sign for which you've got a permit. No problem.
So, if you want to cover half of it with a, whatever sign I want, is that what you're saying?
Oh, okay.
Mega or non-mega, you can change it, it's any one. Don't need a new permit for that. Just don't make it bigger.
Anne, your sign, your sign, your signs are covered by J. three.
Yes.
Over the top.
Yes.
That's a doubt, just correct. Has the ACLU given approval of your construction or permit?
They have not, they have not specifically reacted to this. They reacted to an earlier draft, which we sent them, and they made some very constructive comments, and the board made a number of changes. They did not adopt everything that they recommended. It's, I don't know if you want to go into any detail, but one possible issue is they seem to think that you can say nothing about signs on town land, and we disagree with that. We think that if it's on town land, the selectmen control it and decide what goes and what doesn't go.
Second question, gentlemen, are there any restrictions regarding zoning that this particular rule would not give people the right to do something because they're in this zone, but if you're in that zone, you get to do it?
That happens all the time in zones.
But is this happening now? Is there, if, I'm on, I'm down by one oh two. Does that mean if I want to do something there, somebody on East Street won't be able to do it?
You mean like, is there a quota for the town?
Yeah, I, is there restriction?
Well, if you're on one oh two, you're, you're likely in, what is it, Buck?
Hundred acres.
Industrial. Well, for your personal property, it's gonna, it's the same personal property, it's the same...
I just didn't want it to hinder people from having the, the freedom to do what they want to do because of the zone they're in.
Well, we're a political sign.
Any...
Number two applies in any zone in the town.
Number three applies to any zone.
Number three applies to any zone in the town. Number one...
And just a suggestion for the audience, if they read the whole thing through, which I had to do several times, you start answering your own questions.
It's Cornelia Kowalski, District Four. Just a, it's a wording question on page eleven, F., F. E. It just, it might be the correct legal way of putting it, but it sounded weird to me, so I just, it says emergence, should I, are you there?
Yeah.
Yep.
Emergency removal of signs by the building commissioner. The building commissioner shall cause to be removed without the city's guidance. Wouldn't it be better to say, she'll have the right to remove or something like that?
It's legal.
It's a legal language, is that what it is? It just sounds funny to me.
You mean the, you questioned the shall part or the shall cause?
Shall cause to be removed.
I mean, it, you could say it a different way. You could say may remove or direct to be removed or, I mean, they're all meaning the same thing, basically.
Shall means you have to.
Well, you know, shall sometimes means you have to. In English, it means you have to. In law, it means sometimes you may. Like, a person who, you know, engages in murder shall be sentenced to, you know, the shall doesn't mean shall always. It means it's an empowerment.
I mean, because the rest, the rest of the whole document, to me, it read very clearly and that just, it was hard to follow.
Okay, well, I don't know if we can change it at this point. Can you change it?
It hasn't been signed yet, so.
Oh, okay.
You can, yeah, that's, that's well, that's well within...
There's a couple of little things.
Have we published the warrant?
Place where I had question cards.
No, we're waiting for tonight.
Number that we should fix, if we can.
That, that's well within what we did in the public hearing, so.
I thought I'd do that here, say that before the public hearing.
If, if the, if it's the board's intention that it's discretionary, I'd definitely say may instead of shall. I mean, we didn't talk about this, we talked about a lot, but we didn't talk about this specifically.
Okay, I, I think the word I talked about is...
Yep.
Okay.
Can I ask you another question?
What?
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
So, according to where the political sign crosses out the old definition, and then it has sign of place on private property and designed to influence voters or to influence any official action by more public officials expressing an opinion on a matter of cultural, societal, religious, or political topic. I don't understand how those things are grouped in through the political sign.
Though, under the current bylaw, a political sign is only something that's put up to get somebody elected. And there's a rule about you have to take it down a certain number of days thereafter. And rather than come up with an entirely new term, we just broadened the definition of political, so it includes political, cultural, you know, everything, everything that you want to express an opinion about is now all political purposes of this bylaw.
Okay.
Title is freedom of speech by law.
Right. Well, I just didn't, didn't understand, I guess, why then, why does it still remain the words like a top, political sign, when it should maybe say freedom of speech on it? That was my only thought.
That might be better. I don't know, that's another topic.
I mean, definitions of political, I know, goes all the path, opinion.
You don't think political is drawn up there?
No, because I don't think that political and culture is the same. I don't think political and religious is the same. I mean, everybody's ideas are different.
I don't even know where she was.
We were in... Because it struck this and it kind of...
Okay, that's a political sign.
Yep, that's what, changing the...
And there's a couple more questions, though. District regulations, it has A...
What page, Anne?
I'm sorry, page ten.
District regulations, okay.
B, sign on premises. Does this refer to business signs?
One time, oh, okay, advertise. Or home occupation.
Seven point eight, district regulation.
A, one, B.
Oh, A, one, B, okay.
A, one, B, excuse me.
Oh, A, yeah, one, B.
That, that is not changed. Any, any signs that is allowed under seven point four A, the following signs are allowed, any signs listed by the right. See, section seven point four A, and I don't have section seven point four A, I don't need to tell you what section seven point four A says.
Okay.
The only change is the size. You're going from six to twelve feet.
Right.
Yeah, the only thing that's changed here, this whole text thing was provided in order to explain that in the third line of paragraph D, six square feet is going to twelve square feet.
Correct.
We're doing that because we want to try to minimize the chance that somebody could say, my kind of sign has to be small and his kind of sign can be big. And his, the only difference is what we're saying, and that would be prohibited by the court's decision. So, twelve square feet is the allowed size of some signs, like construction signs. And when we talked about it, and we said we need to make these more equal and reduce the legal risk of those, we said, well, let's just make the home occupation sign is allowed to be crowded. And that's what this does, it makes the home occupation signs twelve feet allowed instead of six square feet.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Seven point seven, page ten, E. three, a contractor may place a sign without a permit not exceeding six square feet on a property of which he or she is permitted to pay. Is there a reason why there's no permit required?
Well, this, like the situation you and I were describing and discussing two minutes ago, this gives a contractor a choice between, what is today a twelve-square-foot sign and remains a twelve-square-foot sign with a permit, or a smaller sign, six square feet without a permit. And it, the twelve square feet would be good if you wanted to list who the architect is and who the consulting electricians are and that sort of thing. A lot of people just want to put a sign out front and say, my, you know, my carpentry company is working here, and that should not require a permit.
Okay. And there's one more thing I wanted to say about the ACLU and the district that was made. So, myself and Josh Bloom, we were two people who went last year to the ACLU because the sign was removed. There was a big blunder and everything got worked out and changed. And according to what's on their website, you guys have a one part, page eight, seven one purpose, P. The rules require balancing several interests, including the support of free expression, the protection of formerly in safe traffic flow, and the protection of least historic and desirable visual appeal. That part of that, a visual appeal, according to the ACLU, shouldn't be in our bylaws because under Reed versus Town and Gilder, there were two justifications for their trying to ban, to preserve the town's aesthetics, appeal and traffic safety. They were ruled insufficient under the test through the ACLU. So, my suggestion is, about the town aesthetics, does it pass with that law according to the ACLU? And I do think that maybe should be taken out.
Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, the case that I was talking about, decided in 2015, it made a legal mess. Holding of the majority was very broad. The holding of the majority said that if a town like Gilbert, Arizona, sets up a bunch of classifications, and according to those classifications, one person doesn't get to do something that somebody else similarly situated would be able to do, based on the difference in the content of the sign, that's a violation of the Constitution. In the same decision, there was a very detailed concurrence with Justice Alito, saying that there are a whole lot of things the town would need to do. And we listed about ten of them. And if, if you think that we have no right to try to protect the visual appeal of our town, none of those ten things make any sense, or very few of those ten make any sense. I'll also mention that at the end of that decision, Justice Kagan, modesty in dissent, in which she said, the court overstepped greatly and would be at risk of invalidating nearly all the sign bylaws in the country based on that decision. Now, that is the majority opinion that the ACLU was referring to. There has been a subsequent decision in the last few months, possibly a few weeks, in which the court looks to me like it's backing down. Justice Sotomayor, who was in the minority on the Gilbert decision, wrote an opinion for the majority this time in which they did not apply the Reed versus Town and Gilbert decision to a different case with different facts. So, I agree that there is some risk that the court might say the Town of Lee has no right whatsoever to try to protect its visual environment. I don't really think that's what they would do. And I don't think that's what they would...
I've turned this today from ACLU's website.
Yeah, I know, I know, that's what the ACLU wants. And that's part of what we discussed and I didn't like, and the majority of the board didn't agree with. So, we remain at some risk that the ACLU might take support, I guess, and we can ask Jeremiah, how much you think the risk is.
Worst case, we'll come back to it when we're in town meeting.
How did you get here if you didn't like it, the majority agreed that you guys didn't like it?
How did what get where? How did the ACLU come to this?
No, you just said that, that you didn't like it and that the board mostly agreed that they didn't like it.
No, we didn't like not having something in there to protect our town visual appearance. We thought that, that phrase was good to have.
The whole, the whole game is about visual appearance. We're trying to protect the visual, we shouldn't have a sidewalk if you don't care about that. So, we're trying to protect it in a way that conforms to the Supreme Court's opinion. And we wish, we'd like very much if the ACLU would agree that this is the perfect solution, but I don't think they're gonna do that.
Personally, I think it's too restrictive.
I'd, I'd just like to add to...
Outside of the sign.
One more thing to, to what Peter had said was, and we talked about all of this at the, at the meetings. What we're saying in the purpose doesn't drive the bylaw. The standards in the bylaw itself, and I, this bylaw, which we discussed at length and, and some of the board members and, and myself did raise every issue that you're talking about with the ACLU. The purpose itself doesn't drive the standard... The purpose itself doesn't drive the standards. At the end of the day, with what they, we worked on and with the edits, the standards themselves are, are uniform, they don't, they don't treat political signs any different than anything else, and I think we really cleaned up the potential mess of, the, the biggest problem with the bylaw was narrowly defining what political signs were, our definition was way too narrow, our, and we also were not clear about where these could be placed. I think we've done that, and we don't treat those signs different from anything else. So.
So that was.
Notwithstanding the reservation about the purpose, and I hear you loud and clear, it doesn't drive the standard.
Thank you for explaining the, the different aspect of it.
Okay, has everybody gotten enough information on this? Okay, so Article thirteen was a, is a citizen's petition, uh, and it's in regard to the fair share amendment resolution. I know Neil probably bought, brought flyers over here in case anyone needs to read it again.
Yeah, there was some material on the table if you didn't get it.
Right. So Neil, you're going to explain?
Um, like very much, Neil Clark, just for two, fair share amendment is a constitutional, state constitutional amendment that will be on the ballot in November, it's gone through many hurdles to get to that stage, eighty percent of the legislature voted in favor of it, uh, it's, uh, in favor, it's favored by over seventy percent of the electorate. Uh, what it does, what it uniquely does is that it establishes a dedicated and sustained revenue stream earmark for public education, public transportation, and infrastructure. That's all it could be spent on, you know, the funds that are raised through this constitutional amendment. Uh, it's estimated to be able to bring in between one and two billion dollars annually, again earmark for those purposes. How it does that is by putting a four cent surcharge on income that's over a million dollars, solely on the income that's over a million dollars. So if you make nineteen thousand, two hundred, thirty-three dollars a week, that's not, that's great, it's not going to be touched. If you make over that, it'll be four cents extra on the dollar for the income that's that's over a million. And by doing that, it's going to raise substantial funds for public education and public transportation, two of the foundational, driving needs for a competitive economy. So, uh, it, it's been passed by the Education Association, it's been passed by the School Board, it's been passed by the Select Board, and it's hoped that the town representatives will vote in favor of it also. If there are, there, there's literature over there, frequently asked questions about, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions or concerns anybody has about the fair share amendment, and I hope that you will vote for it.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Does that, uh, now, yeah, towns, does a town split that up, percentage, each town get a percentage?
It hasn't gone that granular yet, it, like that said, raise, get the vehicle to get the funds, then the legislature is warrant to appropriate, uh, suspend it on only public education, public transportation, infrastructure.
Um, I, I believe, I heard some people who challenge it, arguing that small business owners and farmers would be affected, but I, and I would think, I mean, you're talking about a million dollars of income, it's not gross revenue for those businesses, it's their income.
Correct.
Okay.
Which, which kind of stretches the interpretation of small.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, you said four cents, but it says four percent, right?
Four cents on the dollar would be four percent.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
I'm available anytime.
Article fourteen was also a citizen's petition, and it's an act providing, providing for a recall of an elected official. Anybody want to explain it, that put it on, or?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I have a question, one question about this, on page, on page fourteen, third line, it requires that the petition sheet be signed by one percent of the registered voters, is this state law, or is this something that was written by the petition?
All, all recall petitions are special X, so you, it's, it's outside of the general purview of our authority, uh, if you want a recall petition, we need this to go in front of the general court for approval, so it's, it's a factor of what you put in it, how many people you want, whatever, it's, 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 there's no, it's, it's a thing that you, you weave from cloth, so.
So are you saying it is state verbiage?
Can you speak up, please?
No, it's, it's whoever submitted it.
The way they submitted it.
You can't hear me?
No, no.
Can't hear me. So could it be changed?
Sure.
So one percent of the number of voters in Lee, it's about twenty people.
Could force an election.
Right.
That's right.
That's why I'm asking to see if it can be changed, because there were a couple of things I wondered about that I didn't think were.
This, 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 this is, I mean, I think you know this, this is a, a petition, so it didn't come from the.
We have to put it on.
Thank you.
It could be amended on the floor, but we can't change anything.
You could amend it on the floor, but it has to be an amendment that is consistent with fair notice to the warrant for, for what was published in the warrant.
Okay.
So what that is, is, is a, you know, a moving target.
Okay.
Cornelia.
I just, I hope that that town meeting, or can explain some of this, whoever put it on the ballot.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Because I had some questions too.
Yeah.
Chief Brown.
I got just a opinion, Jeremiah.
Yes, sir.
Seeing there are appointed employees in the town, but not hired employees in the town.
Well, it doesn't say employees.
Section nine basically means that say you hold town office, and somebody wants to recall, here they get forty of their friends to sign up, and you quit, and then the DPW has an opening, and you go to work for the DPW, two years.
Well, I had a question like that, Ryan, sorry.
You're saying, you're saying instead of them actually getting recalled, they quit before they get recalled?
Yep. Because we don't hire people, we appoint them as employees, so if you leave your elected position during the recall process, you could take a job with the town for two years, according to section nine on page thirteen, correct?
I have that question to that.
It's pretty vague, um, I, I mean.
That's what I mean, it's.
I, I don't think it's, it's, it's easy to say that that's a black, black and white answer, because it, an office, I would read that as an elected official in the context of this bylaw, because recall really speaks to elections and re, and reconsidering them. I don't think it, I, I would say it's unlikely that that would apply to an employee who's appointed, I don't think the fact that they're appointed makes it an office, it might be an officer, but they're not, it's not, I, I don't, I don't see it that way, um, but it's not, the bylaw's not clear, uh, and on a lot of fronts, maybe that's one of the ones that is.
Maybe it's.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
Maybe it's something.
Worded perfectly, let's put it that way.
I have one other question, do we already have a method of recall in our town contractor special?
We do not.
Cornelia?
Not on this, but before the end of the meeting, I have a question and just a couple of questions in general, if I could speak to them.
Yeah, well, are there any more questions on the? Okay, John.
Just for, um, question, is there some other towns in Hertford County that have this type of?
Yes, yes, there, there are towns that have this, I don't know how many, um, but you can look up on the state website and it'll give you how many towns have recall provisions, and I think, I'm not sure, that it tells you how, the percentage of towns that have adopted that.
But they all vary, right, the terms of provision?
They're all, they're all whatever those towns choose, um, and whatever's passed by the, the legislature, particular to that town. Some of them require pretty rigorous requirements to get it going, um, I think I've seen them where it's two hundred signatures to get a recall going, um, I've seen these recall provisions defeated, um, adopted, and, uh, I think you, you just, there's a couple of towns right now that are, are blessing the pages of the eagle where they're doing recalls, so.
Can I ask another question? So seeing this as a citizen's petition, and no one's here to answer any questions that we have tonight, if no one's at the town meeting to bring this article up, we would just stand there, stare at each other, and then vote to go home.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to predict what's happening, I'm, I'd imagine if, if it's, if someone had brought this as a petition, it needs a motion, it needs a second, that's your question, needs a motion, needs a second, then it goes under discussion.
We don't have a motion, right?
No.
Well, I, I, one other question I guess I would have is, if this is just a one-off, or whoever did, um, bring this up?
It's not a one-off, you, you need ten, you, well, hold on, you need ten signatures from registered voters to get on the annual town meeting, so that's how this is there. We have to put it on, we have no choice.
Very little background for me to make a decision as far as, is this just a one-off, or whoever came up with this, look at different situations, different towns?
I don't know, I can't answer that.
Well, I don't want to be, uh, telling tales out of school, so to speak, but I did happen to speak with a resident who I believe is the author or involved with this, and I think the motive behind, the intention behind it is to establish a recall vehicle for the town. Now, in terms of how that, my imagination is that this was copied from another town, and I got lost in the reading of it last night, there was a question, but in a brief conversation with one of the people at least involved, and I don't believe in throwing anybody under a bus, I don't think it would be, but I don't feel comfortable saying exactly what it was, but, uh, they're open to, you know, changes on the floor, uh, in fact, I sent an email to Chris this afternoon to, to get that clarification, that open to, uh, you know, changes would have to be done on the floor, because tonight's just information. So the bottom line, the information is, should we have a recall procedure, and then what should it look like? Now, there's a heck of a lot of stuff in there, and I get lost there, but the one percent I took issue with, that I don't think anybody should be subject to, uh, getting forty people answers, uh, in a, in a town of, you know, six thousand, um, in a classroom of, so, uh, the percentage should be demonstrative of this, um, I don't have a, you know, pick a number out of, out of the hat, that's not really fair either, that's, um, and some other questions, just, uh, no offense to anybody, but are the select people covered in this as well? Because the way I read it was decisions go to the select board to initiate things, there, there are a number of things to clear up, I guess, is the bottom line, uh, but essentially, do we need a, and apparently obvious that some folks, whoever signed the petition, believe that Lee could benefit from having a recall process, and it may not be this time around, it may be next time around, but, uh, the.
Anne?
It's any holder of an elective office that's in section one.
Okay.
I just had a question, because, Jeremiah, you just made reference to this, this little petition comes up for a warrant, for the article on the warrant, that you have to bring it, um, but I just saw the select board, two to one vote, nixed a petition for fifty thousand dollars for putting it towards the possibility of looking for.
Yeah, I guess whoever brought.
So lawyers, so I'm just confused.
Well, there's a law, you have to have it in by a certain date, and they're published, didn't get there.
It has to be, yeah, it has to be, you still have to make the cutoff for the citizen's petitions.
Right.
And was that a motion on, I wasn't there, but.
There was, there was an article.
Just because of the date?
It wasn't an actual citizen petition, because it came in after.
Right.
I think the citizen.
We didn't get the citizen's petition in our hand.
Yeah.
Because it was late coming in, so someone put that article, someone made.
So that was, that was by motion what got defeated, so that was a separate thing, uh.
So because it wasn't in on time, as long as it's in on time, though, anything has to be put upon.
Right.
Correct, correct.
But just for, just so everyone knows, ten, ten, ten signatures is the annual town meeting, if you want something on a special town meeting, you need, you need a lot more signatures, it's a percentage of registered voters.
Who voted in the last governor's election.
That's right, that's right, yep, it's weird.
Thank you for clarification.
Cornelia?
Okay.
So, um, I'm just imploring upon, upon the town citizens to vote, it's a very important vote, um, at the, uh, in the elections in terms of whether the townspeople want the rep system or the open town meeting, and it's really important that people really come out and vote for that. The second thing was, my question was around the fifty thousand dollars too, and where has that gone actually?
Are you talking about the one we voted on?
Yes.
It's nowhere.
We've already answered. It's, it's into the general fund, that's what we talked about last special town meeting, right?
No, this was to raise another, appropriate another fifty thousand.
Are you talking?
Yeah, are you, what are you talking about, the original one last year, two years ago?
I know what it was, what it was voted upon, it was voted upon to use it towards legal fees.
Yes, no, that went back to the general fund at the end of the year.
That's what I'm asking about. So then the second thing, um, is also just asking for the three, I think it's three, it might be four now, selectmen who are running, to please have some kind of forum or place that you state your points of view, I would like to hear it.
So you need to ask those people who are running, the town does not provide it.
No, I'm just putting it out there, thank you.
Okay, but we're not done with our meeting yet, sorry.
No, no, just for me, that, thank you.
Okay. All right, one more thing, so, we made a mistake, surprise, and last year we had a citizen's petition that never made it on to, with the special town meeting we had?
The, the annual, there was two in, from the same person.
Right.
One was put on, one wasn't.
Okay.
So we agreed to put it on now.
So we're going to, it's not on here, we just discovered it, and it's going to go on for the annual town meeting, and if anyone remembers, uh, it was a petition, uh, there was an article put on by Bill Matthews, asking for twenty-five thousand, was it?
Yeah, I was going to read it.
Chris has the wording, he'll read it for you.
So it was defeated in twenty twenty, um, for the Technical Information Center for twenty-five thousand, so he put it back on last year with another, um, with actually two other petitions, one being for the CPA, um, which we took care of at the special town meeting recently, um, the other one, which was the citizen scientist, which got there, and then this, this one was omitted, so we agreed to put it on the next one, uh, which would be now.
So that will be added to this warrant?
So that will be a number fifteen, it's the exact same thing as in, uh, twenty twenty, I can read it if you'd like.
Yeah.
To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriator, transfer from avail, available funds to the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars, or any other amount to create a technical information center accessible to all. The content of said center would be relevant documents, videos, and materials, and any other media relating to aspects of PCBs, including health effects, environmental persistence, transportation, removal and remediation. The purpose of this library is to promote informed citizenry that can competently advise the town on the management of PCBs removed from the Zutonic River and environs as part of the GE EPA Rest of River Settlement Agreement.
Okay, just so you all know, there'll be an Article fifteen, and that'll be on it. Gordon, you had something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, to Cornelia's point, um, there has been floated, um, between the three candidates, uh, two possible issues about a get together in a candidate forum, uh, one was to have CTSB film and moderate within CTSB's location at their place, um, have citizens email, phone in, whatever questions, and just have it be, uh, just a calm setting where the three people would have to speak. One of the three candidates chose not to want to participate in that manner. The other was to have it right up at the high school, the three candidates open to whoever wants to show up, uh, same thing, have, uh, questions brought in, you know, and actually that was being worked on with the League of Women Voters, um, but we had a different candidate who didn't want that format, so at this moment in time, I was agreeable either one, I don't care, if the townspeople want to hear from us, you tell me. If the townspeople want to hear from us, you tell me, I'll stand in the corner, I don't care. As long as the three of us are together, I think it's a fair request. I hope to think that that still might happen in either one of those venues or a third venue. I don't care what the venue is. But I just think that it's important. And if all three, I mean, I'm willing to do with one person in one venue and one person with the other venue. I don't really care, you know? I just think that it's important to get candidates together. And that's all I know at this point. That may change tomorrow morning or later tonight, I don't know what else to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ann?
Yeah, to answer Cornelia's question, I was approached to do the CTSB data one-on-one meeting. But the person who approached me said that they were going to be the ones who were going to be selecting the questions from the public and for, to review the questions. So for me, that wasn't going to work. But I totally opened to an open forum for people to actually show up and go to the high school. That was my suggestion. And Gordon and I met for coffee about two months ago, where you and I both said, let's do an open debate.
Absolutely.
You and I had that conversation.
Yep.
We wanted an open debate.
Right.
In public, so people could participate.
I was hoping to just get people to talk. And I don't care how it is, and yeah, I'm fine with that.
I think it'd be a great idea.
Yep.
So there have been, it's a time constraint at this point, I'm going to guess. I don't know, I don't know if the League of Women Voters is going to be doing it. I know Janet said she reached out to them, hoping that that could happen. I have not called in myself personally, I have a meet greet coming up. I have expressed, somebody's not at my store, I put my phone number out there. Anybody can just come in and talk to me. And I'm sure Gordon's the same way, open.
Yep. I still have a landline, can you imagine that? I still have a landline, I'm in an old phone book.
Right, so I'm sure Rob too, you meet up for community. You know, everybody seems to be accessible, yeah, for people to talk to.
Why wouldn't, I'm just curious because you're right, time is a constraint right now getting to high school or wherever. Why not be open to CTSB? It would be on TV and it would be on our website and people could look at it.
Absolutely. When I was first approached, that the questions that were coming in were going to be viewed by one particular person. And to me, that's not an unbiased view for the public.
So change it, put it out, anybody who wants to write a letter to you can find a place to send it to. And then they can give them all to CTSB. And they could ask whatever questions come in. Unless CTSB has the ability to take calls, I don't know.
I don't know, but I think it was just kind of at the eleventh hour. And I think it's too tough at this point to do that, whether it's one person, because I know there was only Janet who was actually trying to do this for us. Nobody else has approached me except for Janet trying to do this. So, and like I said, Gordon and I were both open to it. It's not like we decided we weren't going to. I've been crazy, I just got out of surgery two weeks ago, been down a thrombus in here. I don't know what else to say. I wish I had more time, apologize for that.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make a little bit of details here, that the way I see things. I was reading the newspaper a couple of weeks ago and I saw that the League of Women Voters was doing a debate with their three Select Board candidates. I thought, with this being such an important election, what a good idea that would be. I called the number in the newspaper to the lady at the League of Women Voters. She suggested that because of the time constraints, because it's getting so close to the election, the easiest and cleanest way to do some kind of debate is to ask the three candidates to go to the local TV station, have people submit questions, have moderator from out of town that wasn't biased, and have them read the questions and be able to answer the simplest of questions that people could submit either by email or sending it to the League of Women Voters. I didn't have it all worked out, I didn't have every detail, I wanted to talk. So I met Rob for an hour, which was wonderful, I spoke to Gordon. And excuseably with Ann, I went into her shop and we were interrupted like a lot through it. So I think that that wasn't fair to really do that at that point. And that's my fault for not waiting for another time. However, I was willing to do that to just sort of organize. And the League of Women Voters was going to give me a moderator, not even from the county. They really wanted to even go outside the county so there wasn't anything that anybody appeared to be biased. Ann said, no, thank you, which is fine, she wanted an open forum. And so I said, okay, I'm unwilling to do that. I didn't want to try to get a different place, I didn't want to hire a police officer. And I also just felt like this was a very clean, easy, quick way to organize a debate. And when she said no, it was fine with me. I'm fine because I personally have met all three candidates. And I'm excited that we have three people running for this, for this really important seat. But for right now, I'm kind of stepping back, somebody else can give it a shot.
Thanks very much for your explanation, I appreciate it.
Rob?
Hi, I'm Rob Wright. The three, thank you for everything you've done trying to get this organized. I think this debate should be in a format that's equal and fair for everyone. The same questions should be asked of all three candidates, given time to review the questions with a moderator present. And not, it may or may not be a controlled environment. I believe the local cable station would be a great place to have it. And I would support that.
You're done? Okay. We're going to call the meeting to order unless somebody has, she's next. But before we do-
Well, go ahead.
Is it okay, can she do her thing first? Okay. After Valerie, Sean has one more thing. But remember I mentioned Valerie Bloom is going to talk to us a little bit about the greener gateways? So, go to it, we'll be home before night.
Thank you all, if you want to leave on your seat. It's about the Lee cleanup, the annual cleanup is this Saturday. And we could certainly use more help, Peter Hoffman and I are helping to organize it. And he pointed out to me when we were talking before about signs in town and visual appearance of the town. If you take a walk on some of our streets, our road sides, you will be unhappy to see how much trash has been thrown there. We usually have an annual, a monthly cleanup, and we were not able to do it several months this winter because of the extreme ice and snow. So we are looking forward to Saturday and hope that some of you will consider signing up. I'll stay here for a while. And I think our information is on the back also if you want to email us. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Sean, quick, before they start to-
I just wanted to say a big thank you to Patty for everything that she's done here in town.
We still have another meeting.
I know, I know we have another meeting, but you know, I just thought I'd get up and say thanks.
Well, thank you. Bittersweet. Okay, that's it. Well, I'll get home before nine o'clock. Thank you.